All right, I think we're gonna get started. So, good evening and welcome. We really appreciate you coming out tonight for this League of Women Voters Candidate Forum, featuring the candidates running in the general election for Nagani City Council. I'm Laura Sabo, the spokesperson for the League of Women Voters of Marquette County, the League of Women Voters chapter that's sponsoring this candidate forum tonight. For almost 104 years, the League of Women Voters has engaged and educated voters through candidate forums, voter registration drives, and voter guides. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization established to encourage citizen participation in government. The League never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. We offer you this opportunity to become acquainted with the candidates and their views in order to promote an informed vote on Election Day. We request that all members of the audience remain respectful of the candidates in the forum format. To do so, please turn off all cell phones and refrain from taking photographs or recordings during this forum. Campaign clothing, buttons, or signage are not permitted during the forum. To provide the maximum time for questions, we request that you hold your applause and any comments for the candidates until the conclusion of the forum. This forum is being recorded. The recording will be posted to the League of Women Voters of Marquette County YouTube channel and will be available for viewing in a couple of days. There's a link to the YouTube channel on our Facebook page. We'll begin the program in just a minute, but first, we would like to take this opportunity to extend an invitation to you to support our League and to become a member. The program that you're attending tonight is part of our mission. We are a volunteer organization and rely on dues and donations to make these programs and projects possible. We invite you to financially support this and our other League events. We have a strong working membership and board, but it takes a whole community to achieve our mission. At the end of the program, we'll have flyers available for both donations and membership and other information that you can learn about the League. Thank you again for attending tonight, and the forum will begin now. Please welcome our candidates.
Did you hear the suggestion? Hello?
We test these.
We do test these. It doesn't seem to be a switch on or off. Okay.
Just talk loud. Just talk loud.
Are yours working?
Uh, yeah, is this, yep.
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah, there.
Anyone don't want a song and dance? We'll get this fixed, I think.
I understand, sir. Sorry about this. Good evening, and welcome to the League of Women Voters Forum, featuring the candidates for the Nagani City Council. I am Stan Breitman, a member of the League of Women Voters in Nagani this evening. The Nagani City Council includes adopting ordinances and resolutions, setting financial policy, setting fee schedules, adopting budgets, issuing debt, entering into contracts, and appointing city managers. There are five candidates on the ballot intending for three three-year terms. Tracy Deetz, Amanda Gavonati, David Kangas, Jeff Plummer, Jeff Tobias, Jeff Tobias Smith. Mr. Tobias Smith is unable to attend due to another event and did not send a statement. Ms. Deetz is also not able to attend due to health concerns and did send a statement, which will be read at the closing statements. There are two candidates contending for one unexpired term, which ends November 30th 2025, John Becker and Jill Howard. Ms. Howard is unable to attend due to another event and has sent a statement, which will be read in the closing statements. Bill Foley, who I love, is the assistant moderator, and at the table behind me are the question screens. The format for this evening has been established by the League of Women Voters. These are the rules to which the candidates have agreed. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, one minute for each question, and two minutes for a closing statement. Earlier this evening, our candidates drew numbers for the order in which they will respond. The first candidate responding will be rotated for each response. Each candidate will have the opportunity to respond to each of the questions asked. Our timekeeper, Anna Wild, will hold up a 15-second warning sign and then a stop sign at the end of the call. I will then move questions to the next candidate. The candidates will be answering written questions submitted previously by voters in the city of Nagani and by audience members present. The questions may be combined or reworded for clarity to avoid redundancy. We will use as many questions as time allows and try to cover the most pressing topics. Candidates have agreed to respond only to the questions asked by the moderator. Active debate with other candidates is not allowed. Views expressed or candidate statements provided in this forum are those of the candidates, and the League takes no responsibility for them. The forum is being recorded to the League of Women Voters of Marquette County YouTube channel. Links for the recorded forum are on our Facebook page. Still photos may appear on these same sites. Candidates are not allowed to use audio or video from the forum in campaign material or advertising. We welcome the ladies candidates who are sitting in the order in which they will respond. As determined by law, we will begin with opening statements, starting with candidate Becker. You have the floor for one minute.
Thank you. Good evening, all. Thank you for taking your time to be here. It's really important, I think, that folks are engaged and come to learn, you know, what the candidates are all about, and I hope you get a lot out of this this evening. Myself, I'm John Becker. I have lived in the U.P. for 25 years. I've lived in Nagani for 20 years, and for the vast majority of those, I've been plugged into the city in our government and trying to better things to the best of my ability. I've served twice on the city council, twice have been appointed by our city council to fill in for seats when previous people have either vacated or left, and in addition, I've been on the Planning Commission for over 15 years. Sorry, I thought you were holding that up. Our, um, there you go.
Okay.
The first one she's gonna hold up is a 15-second warning, so you can see that the first one. Can you press on your team?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I, could I ask just that if the, the sign be faced down until it's time? Because from here, it's hard to see whether you're, you're actually displaying it or not. Thank you.
Candidate Kangas?
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this forum. It's the first time I've ever been to one of these, so I wanna say thank you for being here and also to the other candidates for arriving also. I was born and raised in Launce, Michigan, Go Purple Hornets, and I've lived in Nagani since 2006. I first got on city council in 2013 as I was appointed for a one-year term. Then after that, I got into a three-year term, and then for a period of times, been on council ever since. I've been mayor for two time, or two terms, and I really enjoy representing the state of Nagani. I begun to love this town, you know, being from Launce, I didn't before because we always came over and practiced against you guys and you beat us up, so I didn't like Nagani. But I have grown to love the town, and the people are night, are warm and friendly, and I just enjoy representing you, and thank you and your confidence.
Candidate Plummer, you have the floor for one minute.
Jeff Plummer. Thanks to the League of Women Voters and all of you citizens for showing up tonight. My wife and I moved here 22 years ago, fell in love with the town of Nagani. Over those years, I've run several businesses in downtown. I've served on two different DDAs. We have a 16-year-old son, born and raised here in Nagani. Originally, we were drawn to Nagani. It's small charm, town charm is obvious. It was affordable. We loved the historic downtown, and the people were very friendly and welcoming, and we felt right at home here. I would love the opportunity to give back to the community and by listening and carefully working with our citizens and working on their behalf. Wonderful things are happening in Nagani, but many citizens are feeling left behind and unheard. Moving forward to me means that no one feels left behind. Thanks for your consideration.
Candidate Ganabati, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Amanda Ganabati. I grew up here in Nagani, went to this high school. My picture is in the class of 2002 over there. My kids went here, so I, I am very invested in this town. I do not have experience in city government, however, I do know Nagani, and I know the people, and, and a lot of them know me. I, I just, thank you to all of you for coming and joining us tonight, and I look forward to hearing and answering your questions.
Okay, thank you. That concludes opening statements. We will now proceed with the question segment. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. We will begin with candidate Kangas. Question is, what are the, any of your real priorities?
I'll do my best.
Okay. What are the three top priorities for Nagani City Council in the next two years, and what ideas do you have for addressing them?
Well, the top three, I, top three things are, one, continuing in the improvement of our infrastructure of, of our city. As you can see, for the past couple of years, we've made a big improvement downtown and also extending into the different arteries of the city. I see that as number one. Number two, continuing in the movement and the positive direction of the property maintenance code, because it will help people, help just with the revitalization of town and will help with the overall tax base and bringing it down theoretically. And I, and then also the third one, continuing to look out for our city employees and seeing that they have the equipment available, that they need to do their jobs effectively. Because it's, especially come winter time. We all know what happens in winter time, so I want them in the best snow removal equipment they got to see that they can, we can get around our ci, our city in a, in a easier way. Thank you.
Candidate Plummer, you have the floor.
I would say that one of the number-one things I've seen as of recent is we could involve citizens, we could develop forums and open up more conversations with our citizens by virtue of having easier access. One thing I believe is we should have live broadcasted city council meetings again, where everyone, a lot of people don't have the time to come to city council meetings, and I think the same could happen with our DDA and Planning Commission. With technology today, it should be fairly easy to actually expand the viewership of what's going on in the city and expand the conversation with our citizens. I also believe we need a little more robust protection of some of our city's natural and cultural resources, and I would like to see our green spaces put into permanent protection and safe from development, especially our park areas. And I also believe we need to work on affordable housing. The housing crisis we have is affordable housing, and so I think there's many ways to approach that common sense ways, and those would be the three top.
Candidate Ganabati?
Um, I, in the same vein as, as Jeff, I, I believe that we need to see more community involvement in big decisions made by the city. You know, their, their voices need to be heard, and I think that more people need to be informed of what is going on in city government. I'd like to see more people at city council meetings and planning commission meetings and, and things of that nature. And, you know, the ways that we can do that is, you know, again, broadcasting these meetings. We used to have them live broadcast of meetings, and I think that we need to get that going again, and I also, I, you know, strongly believe in, in preserving the culture and history of Nagani. I think we have a very rich, interesting culture. Thank you.
Candidate Becker, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think the three things that are really facing our community are definitely housing. Beyond affordable housing, I think it's really important that we start to look for options for senior housing. We have a number of older residents who would love to stay in this community, would love to stay close to their family and to their friends, but it probably doesn't make sense for them to stay in a big house any longer, and there aren't very many options for them. If we can work on that issue and move them into housing that better suits them as they age, you'll find that their, their houses will open up for other families that would fill them. I think the second thing we need to work on is managing our development. I think that we've been, you know, going through quite a bit of change that maybe feels rapid to some, but has been planned, because all of this takes years to happen from engineering on down. And I think the third thing is infrastructure. I think everybody, you know, likes a lovely, beautiful town, but also wants their roads fixed, and I just wanna remind people that we don't fix 30 years of neglect overnight.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with candidate Plummer. What will you do to attract and/or increase businesses, clubs, and activities in Nagani so we don't have to drive to Marquette to get these services and opportunities?
I think one thing, we could have more forums, partnerships between private enterprises and the city with developers, for example. We've had senior listening sessions that didn't go very far, but if we brought private developers in that were looking to address some of the senior housing needs, interfacing with seniors looking for that, I think we could build these direct connections between the private sector and our citizens, and the same is with any business model. If you talk to people developing, running businesses and get them with the citizens, we can fulfill needs, and I think people will be drawn to Nagani by virtue of that public-private relationship, but the private sector, I believe, will react to the needs of the citizens if they are aware of that, and we could do a better job at facilitating those interactions. Thank you.
Candidate Ganabati?
Well, I, I believe that, you know, if you wanna get businesses here, we need, you know, people that will be patronizing these businesses. If we want to have businesses here and increase tourism, then we need to have somewhere for them to stay. I think there should be, they should allow more Airbnbs in the area or, you know, have some, some other sort of lodging for people who are vacationing here. And there is, you know, there's only so many permits for Airbnbs, and I think that should be increased. Also, I think that, you know, with the, with the coming opening of the Vista Theater, we need more parking downtown. A lot of, man.
Candidate Becker?
Can you repeat the question one more time, please? Thank you.
What will you do to attract and/or increase businesses, clubs, and activities in Nagani so we don't have to drive to Marquette to get these services and opportunities?
Sure. You know, my brother-in-law and I own a small business in downtown Nagani. One of the key factors in deciding to locate here was the, the city and particularly the city manager conversations that made it very warm and welcoming and inviting kind of place to consider investing and opening a business. And beyond that, then, things like the DDA grants that helped improve the facades across downtown from, you know, businesses that have been here for decades that are well-loved like Tino's, Smarties, you know, these kinds of places, as well as our own, really benefited, and that has helped encourage other business owners to invest in their properties as well. So I think that's a really critical element to, to drawing new business to the area. It's probably, probably the most significant, or, you know, those kinds of ways that, like grants and tax incentives, will draw new people.
Candidate Kangas, you have the floor.
Okay, well, it's like a business, you know, business sense, now that Mr. Becker, you know, you know, Jeff or Amanda, I don't know, the greatest business sense in the world. I'm a retired state employee. I'm not, I'm not talking that down, but I do think I have the power, I, I have the, I can observe things. All I know is that within the last three or four years, there's been upwards of 20 or 22 new businesses have come to Nagani and started up. So, I'm a big believer in not trying to be the smartest person in the room, but trying to find the smartest person in the room, and I have a lot of confidence in the people for which are making the moves and doing what's needed to bring these new businesses to town so that the rest of us who are living in town can appreciate that and also bring other people from out of the area to appreciate our, just, for example, an ice cream shop or a flower shop, what have you. I just think we have things in place that do that.
Okay. Candidate Ganabati, I will head to questions first. What special experience and skills do you have to bridge internal division within the council to better serve the community and support the city manager and city staff?
Special skills? Well, being a business owner, I think, you know, listening to my customers and giving them what they want, finding ways to get people what they want. I, I believe in listening to the citizens and what they would like to see in Nagani is, is key to having the town that we want. I, you know, I believe that we can all come to an understanding and, and cooperate with each other in order to make this the best place to live for everyone here.
Candidate Becker?
My background is in communication. My degree's in communication, and a lot of what I do on a daily basis in, in terms of my work is, is related to that and finding ways to relate to people. I think that the, you know, strongest evidence for my success at that is I've worked with two different city councils. I've worked under four different city managers as, as a member of the Planning Commission and now Chair of the Planning Commission. I've worked with three different planning and zoning administrators, and, you know, so I've got every bit of a track record that shows that I'm capable of, of, you know, having tough conversations with people, but also finding ways that we can all work together. And so I, you know, I certainly try to have that be one of my hallmarks, that I'm willing to listen and, and then help us find the best path, best path forward.
Candidate Kangas?
Okay. I guess for one, was that me? I guess for myself, being on council for as long as I have, you know, either yea or nay, it's the, people recognize me, so if people, they may ask me questions, and I may not know the exact answer to that question at that moment. You know, I, I'm not gonna BS someone just to give them an answer at that moment. I'll say, okay, I don't know the exact answer, but give me a day or two, I'll get back with you on that, and even if it's an answer you don't wanna hear, and that's usually normally is the case. I'll go to the source for which knows more than I do and ask what that, what that answer may be, and then I get back with the person, and it's either I'm fired up or that's not what I wanted to hear, but they at least appreciate the getting back with them and having the courtesy to do that.
Okay. Candidate Plummer? Ooh, it's working.
I think if we remind ourselves of how power should flow in any community, and that the power starts with the people. The people are the ones running the community. They vote for elected officials to represent them, and then as city council members, council members direct the city manager as to, and it's a back-and-forth dialogue. The city manager has a lot of experience, and there's a back-and-forth, but it all starts with the people and representing what the people wanna see in their town. And I think when you see conflict and you see things where there's some discontent or let's say just confusion, it may be we could listen better to what the people want. It's not a monolithic voice. We have different, different voices out there, but the idea is trying to bring everyone to the table, and I think every city manager likes a clear and concise direction from their city council, and that could be something that could be improved on. Thanks.
Okay. Candidate Becker, we will start with you for this question. What can the city council do specifically about increasing affordable housing and senior housing in Nagani?
Well, you know, we just looked at some of those options here in this community not too long ago, and it's, it's pretty limited what the city can do. You know, the city has limited options in terms of, you know, property that it can sell, things that it can do to motivate people. So the kinds of things that are available now are the kinds of things that motivate private development to take on those kinds of projects. That'll mean things hopefully like, you know, either grants or incentives, tax abatements. The state of Michigan just recently adopted a, kind of a TIF district, a tax increment financing option for neighborhoods for residential housing. There are things that we can do like waiving connection fees, which is something that we've looked at in the past. There are, but, you know, there are a limited number of things that the city can do to really push private development. Other than that, it's gonna be things like brownfields and finding other ways to help developers make, make building a project affordable.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Kangas?
Oh, it's, it's a good one. Well, like what Mr. Becker just said, one, be utilizing what's available during, through a brownfield, because there's a lot of area around here, and granted, yes, there's protected areas, I understand that, but there's also areas for which could be improved on through a brownfield, you know, grant or whatever, and for the city, be a good idea to look into them, and granted, yes, ADUs, they're a good idea, but people's backyards are only, some are only so big. So the specific answer to that question is we have people who are on the Planning Commission, who are on the DDA zoning, who know a lot more information on that than I do. So I would put my confidence in the people who know more than I do and kind of go with their suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Plummer, you have the floor.
I think probably the biggest untapped solution, it's not a total solution, to the housing shortage are the ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units. The one problem I see with them, they're allowed in both R2
experience and skills do you have to bridge internal division within the council to better serve the community and support the city manager and city staff?
Special skills? Um, well, um, being a business owner, I think, um, you know, listening to my customers and, um, giving them what they want. Um, finding ways to get people what they want. Um, I, I believe in listening to, um, the citizens and, uh, what they would like to see in Nagani, um, is, is key to having, um, the town that we want. Um, I, you know, I believe that we can all come to an understanding and, and cooperate with each other, um, in order to make this the best place to live for everyone here.
Candidate Becker?
Uh, my background is in communication. My degree is in communication and, uh, a lot of what I do, uh, on a daily basis in, in terms of my work, uh, is, is related to that and, uh, finding ways to relate to people. Uh, I think that the, you know, strongest evidence for my success at that is I've worked with two different city councils. I've worked, uh, under four different city managers as, uh, as a member of the planning commission and now chair of the planning commission. I've worked with three different planning and zoning administrators. Uh, and, you know, so I've got every bit of a track record that shows that, uh, I'm capable of, of, you know, having tough conversations with people, uh, but also finding ways that we can all work together. Um, and so I, you know, I certainly try to, uh, have that be one of my hallmarks, uh, that I'm willing to listen and, um, and then help us find the best path, best path forward.
Candidate Kengas?
Okay. I guess, uh, for one, was that me? Uh, I guess for myself, uh, being on council for as, as long as I have, you know, either yea or nay, uh, it's the, people recognize me. So if people, they may ask me questions and I may not know the exact answer to that question at that moment. You know, I, I'm not going to BS someone just to give them an answer at that moment. I'll say, okay, I don't know the exact answer, but give me a day or two. I'll get back with you on that. And even if it's an answer you don't want to hear, and that's usually normally is the case. I'll go to the source for which knows more than I do and ask what that, what that answer may be. And then I get back with the person. It's either I'm fired up or that's not what I wanted to hear. But they at least appreciate the getting back with them and having the courtesy to do that.
Okay. Candidate Plummer?
I think if we remind ourselves of how power should flow in any community and that the power starts with the people. The people are the ones running the community. They vote for elected officials to represent them. And then as city council members, council members direct the city manager as to, and it's a back and forth dialogue. The city manager has a lot of experience and there's a back and forth, but it all starts with the people and representing what the people want to see in their town. And I think when you see conflict and you see things where there's some discontent or let's say just confusion, it may be we could listen better to what the people want. It's not a monolithic voice. We have different, different voices out there, but the idea is trying to bring everyone to the table. And I think every city manager likes a clear and concise direction from their city council. And that could be something that could be improved on. Thanks.
Okay. Candidate Becker, we will start with you for this question. What can the city council do specifically about increasing affordable housing and senior housing in Nagani?
Well, uh, you know, we just looked at some of those options here in this community not too long ago and it's, it's pretty limited what the city can do. Uh, you know, the city has, uh, limited, uh, options in terms of, you know, property that it can sell, uh, things that it can do to motivate people. So the kinds of things that are available now are the kinds of things that motivate private, uh, development, uh, to take on those kinds of projects. Uh, that'll mean things hopefully like, uh, you know, either, uh, grants or, uh, incentives, tax abatements. Uh, the state of Michigan just, uh, recently adopted a, a kind of a TIF, uh, district, a tax increment financing option for, uh, neighborhoods for residential housing. Uh, there are things that we can do like waiving connection fees, which is something that we've looked at in the past. Uh, there are, but, you know, there are a limited number of things that the city can do, uh, to really push private development. Uh, other than that, it's going to be things like brown fields and, and finding other ways to help developers, uh, make, make building a project affordable.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Kengas?
Oh, it's, it's a good one. Uh, well, like what Mr. Becker just said, uh, one, be utilizing up what's available during, uh, through a brown field. Cause there's a lot of area around here and granted, yes, there's protected areas. I understand that. But there's also areas for which could be improved on, uh, through a brown field, you know, grant or whatever. And for the city, be a good idea to look into them. And granted, yes, ADUs, they're a good idea, but people's backyards are only, some are only so big. So the specific answer to that question is we have people who are on the planning commission, who are on the DDA zoning, uh, who know a lot more information on that than I do. So I would put my confidence in the people who know more than I do and kind of go with their suggestions.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Plummer, you have the floor.
I think probably the biggest untapped solution, it's not a total solution to the housing shortage, are the ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units. The one problem I see with them, they're allowed in both R2 and, uh, R1 and R2 areas, but the minimum square footage is so high. It's a minimum of seven hundred and twenty-five square feet. Like Dave said, there's, there's no, many lots can't fit that size footprint. Many communities, Seattle, Los Angeles, who have housing crises, they actually allow much smaller ADUs, two hundred square feet, even smaller than that. But if we let citizens choose a little more, pick what size ADU they would want, then they could meet the setbacks, all the code regulations would still be there. And we'd have truly affordable housing if people could build smaller and fit in the smaller platted historic lots like we have in Nagani. I think that would be a huge step towards that. And then seniors could have an ADU they could downsize into, still be on their property, rent out their home or vice versa. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, candidate Ganabati?
Um, in the same vein as, as Jeff, I, I agree that ADUs, um, that was just recently put through, um, the city council to allow ADUs in, in R2 and R1. Um, that is, is a great way to come up with a solution for, um, the housing shortage. Also, um, really, uh, giving incentives for, um, private developers and, and, um, owners of these, um, construction companies to, to, um, like Snap builders and, and like, um, uh, Argol, um, to, uh, get to, um, you know, build some multifamily homes, um, on some of these smaller lots. Cause you can't build a single-family home on some of, you know, and fix the housing crisis. We need more multifamily homes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, candidate Kengas, you will begin with this question. What do you think the city's, uh, what do you think of the city's strategic plan? Do you think the city has done enough to get public input during the planning process?
Strategic plan? Well, in other words, uh, a city master plan is the way I keep, what I'm hearing there. Uh, each, uh, five years, the city has a master plan and ours now is through 2028. And to obtain that master plan, you have listening sessions, you have public input sessions. Uh, people come, they give their, uh, the ones that do show. So yes, more people show to these, gives us more information. But yeah, it's, uh, of what direction they would like to see the city go in those five years. And then, uh, they then goes to a, you know, a public, like public hearings, first public hearing, second public hearing, and then being adopted. So that's why it's important that more and more people come out so that we can get a good visual on what direction they want the city go to. Because if there's few people, it's, it's, it's rather frustrating. It's because some, it's, you're dark, as they say, sometimes you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't.
Candidate Plummer, you have the question?
If I'm not incorrect, I think the strategic plan does differ a little from the master plan. And it's something I believe we're going to be reviewing soon. It's all underway. If I'm correct, is I've been to a, the, the most recent session where there was public input, working with Lake Superior Community Partnership. And the one thing I saw is again, I don't think the community was brought out enough to have an honest look at what the people want. We've talked about with citizens, the idea of better surveys, online, paper surveys that are very detailed, written with an independent, you know, no, no bias as to what direction to go or not. But again, I think we're having an issue getting deep citizen input. And many of the committees that we have, new committees, seem to be a lot of the same people and it's not drawing enough citizens. It seems to be singular voices rather than the complex society that we live in, in our town. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, candidate Ganabati, uh, same question.
Can I ask you to repeat the question?
Sure. Uh, what do you think of the city's strategic plan? Do you think the city has done enough to get public input during the planning process?
Um, well, as a citizen for most of my life, I was not really aware of the, uh, of the strategic plan, um, or that citizens could have been involved. Um, so yes, I, I think that, um, there needs to be a lot more citizen involvement, not just certain people, but the, the town as a whole. Like if they're not going to come, then we need to go and find the citizens and ask them, um, you know, by survey or interview or go door to door and ask people, um, what they see, what they envision, um, you know, for our strategy going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, candidate Becker, same question?
Sure. Um, you know, having just attended the last, uh, session with, with Dave and Jeff, uh, you know, uh, there were a number of people there, but I certainly wish there were more. I, I'd just like tonight, I wish this room was packed. I wish we could fill this room two times over. Um, but I think that, uh, you know, people are busy. Uh, everybody's got a life and, and to some degree, uh, there is certainly some fatigue, uh, in, in trying to be everywhere all the time. Um, you know, are some people maybe just waking up to the fact that there have been these, uh, public input sessions going on all the time? Absolutely. And, uh, you know, am I happy that they're here now and that they're, uh, you know, sharing their voice? Absolutely. That's a good thing because it's giving us a broader understanding of what our community wants and, and where we're going. Um, but the fact of the matter is this, you know, the city has requirements in order to meet, uh, you know, be able to use that plan for grant funding and all sorts of things. Uh, so the city is doing what it needs to do, but some of the, some ideas like going door to door or any of those kinds of things are, are just financially impractical.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Plummer, this next question will begin with you. Teal Lake Beach is a popular spot for Nagani residents, but the goose poop is a big problem. How would you propose to address this if you are elected to the city council?
Well, that's a very, that's a very difficult question. It sounds like an easy question, but it's not because there's, I've heard so many ideas floated about how to do it. None of them sound humane to me. I think we need to learn to get along with, with geese. There, I don't, I don't think the problem is, is dire as we see. There's a lot of non-invasive things like the dog, the shadow dogs that, and there's probably a lot of other. I know out in Mishigami, they do strings with CDs on them. It seems really simple, but the geese don't like them. It's literally used CDs on a string and it keeps them off the beach. And so we should look at humane options that allow us to live with our wildlife friends and, cause Teal Lake is an incredible resource for us. And we could even look at like the old Croy Street project, the idea of enhancing Teal Lake, making it bigger, trying to expand the beach if that's all possible. And then the amount of room for geese and people would probably improve and it wouldn't be as big of a problem. But there's other options out there that are humane.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Ganabati?
I'm all about, um, you know, being humane when it comes to, um, you know, coexisting with, with geese. But I understand that it's, it's a big problem and, um, goose excrement can carry a lot of diseases as well that we definitely don't want to get sick, you know, from, from, you know, accidentally ingesting it or, or whatever. So, um, you know, I do see that it is an issue that needs to be addressed, but, um, I don't agree with some of the, the less humane, um, options that I've heard. But I think there are, there are other communities that have dealt with this successfully. Um, and we can learn from them. We can use, um, natural deterrents like the, the statues. We can use natural, um, you know, oils and plants and, um, things that would be not toxic.
We will move on now to candidate Becker, please.
Um, you know, this is, uh, it's a challenge, um, but it's, you know, as others have said, it's also having to find a way to coexist, I think largely. Uh, you know, this, the uh, kind of reflective Mylar tape, much like the CDs was something that was used, uh, last year largely around Lakeview School. Um, the dog signs certainly seem to work and, and have improved. It seems like when they get moved around, uh, the signs that get moved around, that seems to help because, uh, it, you know, makes it look like the dog is actually moving. Um, I think those are, you know, low-cost effective ways for us to address, uh, this issue. Um, you know, other ideas like, uh, you know, the Croy Street project, I, I think that ship sailed a long time ago. Well, it would have been nice to have a much bigger, uh, kind of public gathering area there near the beach. Uh, we've put tens of thousands of dollars into redoing that street. Uh, and, you know, there are projects in the works for that neighborhood, uh, in the, in the, you know, next year to two years. So that's not an option.
Thank you. Candidate Kengas?
Remember how many years ago we had the turkeys in town? Was it maybe four or five turkeys that were kind of hanging around Buck's Party Store and that? Uh, they were just there for a little bit, but why they were, who knows? They eventually left. Uh, but as for geese and that, they, they're, they're a wild animal and they are very regimented. Like you go to the Wampanoag Golf Course, you go on number, hole number five, number seven, fourteen, fifteen. It's, the geese are always there. And it's like when you walk the golf course, you're walking three times the distance because you're walking like this, not stepping the you-know-what. So how do you, how do you deal with that? Well, at the prison, I saw once that they would use a, like a spray that they would put on the grass that would like get rid of, uh, or keep deer in such a way. Now, that was a, a neat idea. Cost wasn't costly, but it stunk to high heaven. I mean, the goose, you know what, smelled better. So, but as for the answer to that question, I, I have no idea.
Okay. For the next question, we'll start with candidate Ganabati. What is the best way to maintain our small-town character and sense of community?
Well, in my opinion, um, I think that preserving our, our history is, is a big part of that. Um, I think that we can, um, you know, I've, I've heard the idea of, of creating a walking museum of Old Town, just so that people remember what that was. And, um, and I think that's a great idea. Um, I think just, um, having a closer-knit community, bringing people together. I think that, um, some of the, uh, festivals that we've been doing, um, different events have kind of brought us together as a town. And, um, and I think that, um, you know, just listening to people, um, listening to, uh, what they want and having compassion.
Thank you. Candidate Becker, same question?
Oh yeah, I would absolutely agree that, you know, several of the things that we're doing community-wise is in terms of festivals, Fall Fest, um, Haki Lunta moving downtown. Uh, those kinds of things create that sense of, of community and they're absolutely important to living in the kind of place where I want to live. A kind of place where, you know, uh, when you're out of town, your neighbor comes and shovels your driveway. Those, those are the kinds of, uh, things that I, I look for and certainly appreciate about, uh, our town. Um, you know, in terms of our small-town character, I, I think a lot about our downtown character. And, and a lot of the history is in the buildings that are there. Uh, we have unfortunately lost, uh, two really, uh, shining stars of our downtown over the last few years because they've been neglected and they've been allowed to be neglected, uh, to the point that they fell down, uh, and, or had to be taken down, uh, to the, to the cost of, you know, half a million dollars between the two buildings that you and I are paying for. Uh, and so, you know, certainly one of my hopes is that, uh, we will encourage those that own properties in town to take care of them.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Kengas?
Well, I guess I'll, you know, tail off of what, uh, Mr. Becker just said. Uh, the improvement of our downtown, uh, the improving of the buildings, uh, the, uh, the bringing up the activity into downtown, the different festivals and that is, I mean, for, uh, Haki Lunta, there's this, uh, uh, group of people that come from Meyer Mountain. And for the past two years, they've hunted me down and said, "Oh, me, oh, Mr. Mayor." And the lady gives me a hug and such. I'm like, I know her name, you know, but she's, but they come up here to appreciate our small-town atmosphere because that's what it is. And then with the, and with the social district now put in, put into effect, that gives people more mobility to get around town. It just, I think what the city is doing is they're, they're on target with keeping the hometown, uh, feeling and, uh, and the atmosphere for which, uh, people are looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Plummer, same question?
I would start looking at our small-town charm and a lot of times looking at outsiders who comment on what great amenities Nagani has, Old Town being, being one of them. This incredible natural and cultural resource. And when we protect those and preserve those, we're reminded of our history, we're connected as a community. And we've seen attempts to develop part of Old Town that thankfully citizens resisted. Uh, but if we push, push, push just to develop, we could lose some of that character of, of our small-town. And so it's not being anti-development, it's just trying to pick out the good ideas and separate them from maybe ideas that aren't so good. And it just goes right back to the people. I think most of our citizens have an idea of what's good for the town they all love. Many of them born and raised here. Many of them came here because they wanted a small-town, like myself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, candidate Becker, we'll start with you on this question. What are your major concerns about the city of Nagani's finances?
Um, I don't have a ton of concerns about finances. Uh, you know, we have, uh, gone through, uh, audits obviously every year. The last one, I just reported that, you know, the city is in, in a very healthy, uh, condition. Our fund balances are growing, uh, which is going to allow us to make more investments. Uh, you know, we just sat, uh, through the twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-five budget sessions and, um, you know, have a pretty great, uh, outlook on things going forward. I think there are a number of capital investments that need to be made and they're on the schedule to be made. Uh, we, you know, we just invested last week in a new plow truck and in a new police cruiser. Uh, I know that there are new fire trucks needed for the fire hall as well as repairs and improvements to that building. Um, but again, you know, we've had thirty years of neglect. We haven't put investment back into the city in, in a generation and it doesn't get fixed overnight. It's going to take, uh, years, uh, to get there. Uh, but we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Candidate Kengas?
Uh, this, the city finances, I feel very comfortable about because like Mr. Becker said, we just had, maybe what, maybe six weeks ago, we had our, uh, city accountant come in and gave us, uh, uh, the, uh, gave us the, the picture of our, of our finances, where we're at. And it was a very good, it was a very good, uh, uh, where we were at and a good future going forward. Uh, so he's an expert. He's someone who knows what he's talking about. I tend to ride with the experts who know what there's, I know about this. You know, Mr. Smith, who's not here tonight, but he was that one-time city accountant for City Nagani. You know, Toby knows numbers. So he's a good source for me to go to. It's like, Toby, does this look good? He goes, "Yeah, Dave, that looks good." But however, we still do, like John said, we still, uh, still need to make some purchases, like, like said, a plow truck and, uh, different type of, uh, you know, bigger purchase like that just so that we see that, uh, city, like I originally said, get what they need so they do their job.
Thank you. Candidate Plummer?
I concur with John and Dave. Our financial situation as a city looks, looks very good. I don't personally see that changing anytime soon. There's so much interest in Nagani. We've become pretty much a preferred community in the area for people to move to. And I can't, I can't blame them. It's a phenomenal town to live in and, and a lot of people want to be part of Nagani. I, when it comes to fiscal issues, I'm actually concerned a lot about our citizens that some people are struggling in this economy with inflation. So even though our city government per se might be solvent, I really want to look out too for the people in our town that might be struggling. Cause our tax base is going to keep growing. And often when a tax base grows from development, you usually don't see property taxes and things like that go down. They often go up. It's a strange phenomenon. But, uh, I want to make sure that people are fiscally sound and that their families can afford to keep living in Nagani. That is a concern of mine.
Thank you. Candidate Ganabati, same question?
Uh, seems like we're doing pretty good financially. Um, I, I think with all the improvements downtown, um, that, uh, businesses have been doing pretty well. Um, I, you know, in the, in the same vein as Jeff, I, I'm concerned about a lot of people being priced out of the community. You know, um, we, we seem to not have much in the way of empty houses. A lot of people, as soon as, as soon as something comes on the market, soon as something comes on the market, it's getting snapped up. So, you know, I think our, you know, tax revenue is, is doing pretty well. But I, I think that some people who have lived here for generations are, are starting to, you know, have an issue with affording to live here, as it becomes more and more gentrified. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin this question with candidate Kengas. How do you feel about the proposed nineteen-acre campground in Iron Town?
Good question. It's, I guess it comes down to, well, we got, we have like planning commission, we have like different levels of, and I'm not spinning this just to say I'm avoiding this, that's not the point. It's got different chains of opinions or beliefs that it goes to before it comes on, it gets in the council's lap. But speaking of specifically, something that could maybe more of like on a temporary type, okay, you have like order shore come through, you know, like maybe, like temporary little camping spots or whatever for them, and then maybe, I don't know, you know, charge them twenty bucks a night or whatever to pitch up a tent? I don't know. But just something that would create some type of interest, but also not digging things in and saying, okay, this, this is permanent. I don't think it's, would be time yet to speak of something like that.
Thank you. Candidate Plummer, same question.
Would you be able to clarify the question? You said nineteen acres in Iron Town. I'm not sure where they, they mean that. I, there was a proposal for a nineteen-acre campsite in Old Town, and there is talk of a camp over off of County Road 480. I don't know where Iron Town specifically would be. I can address the nineteen-acre proposal that, that was proposed at a special meeting months ago. It was actually a planning commission meeting on the eve of the election deciding the fate of the other five-acre Old Town. Many people showed up in opposition because it was a temporary campsite. So that's the only specific nineteen acres in Old Town unless the 480 campsite is nineteen acres, which I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that was. So the question, it's not easy if I, if there's no clarification on it. But the, the public definitely opposed the temporary campsite in Old Town. It would have cut trees down, mowed meadows down, right in the heart of Old Town near all the trails. And, and a lot of people felt the special meeting, only one person I know got a letter, and it would have gone completely unknown. And so that was one thing that was another bone of contention that a lot of citizens had, that these things look like they're being kind of pushed through quietly with these special meetings that no one seems to know about.
Yeah, I question the clarity of the question to start with.
This is a question we received from the audience, just as it's written.
Okay, that's fair, yeah.
So candidate Ganabati.
Again, it would be easier to answer if we knew what we were talking about. But the, if, if it is what I think it is, the, the nineteen acres in, that was proposed as a temporary campground in Old Town was, was shot down vehemently. So, you know, I think that it, it's been abundantly clear that citizens want to protect our green spaces and not have any type of permanent development there. So if that's what we're talking about, then that's my answer.
Okay. Candidate Becker.
Sure. Hopefully I can provide some clarity to this. As, as Chair of the Planning Commission, though there, there was not ever a proposal for a nineteen-acre campground in Old Town. That was never proposed. There was a small pilot project, temporary, one, you know, sixty to ninety-day project that was proposed and was turned down by the Planning Commission precisely because it wasn't in a great location. And, you know, people bring us all kinds of projects. So there was a proposed campground off of 480, which is where that pilot project landed, which is a partnership with a company that's trying to, you know, explore the use of a new product. And, you know, the city had applied two years ago now to see if there was some grant funding to put in a campground there. That grant funding did not materialize, and there is no, that project has no legs. It's not moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Plummer will begin with you for this question. What critical infrastructure needs should be addressed over the next two years?
Thankfully, our city has done a very good job of addressing many of the aging infrastructure components. And there's actually pretty serious maps of, in great priorities, which I, I completely agree with the city approach on this. They looked at when they're going to tear up a street, they look at the age of infrastructure underneath, sewer, water, et cetera. And they prioritize by considering, let's tear up the street once, do it all. And I think we have a great plan in place. So I think most of those things will be taken care of in time. The plan is, I think, very well thought out. And I think we're, we're on target over time to catch up with some of the deferred maintenance. And I don't see anything really specifically to be concerned about, other than we keep on some sort of track. The plan in place looks sound and makes a lot of sense economically because it does a lot with one motion, and it's a very efficient way of tackling those issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ganabati, same question.
Yeah, again, I think that I, I was at the meeting where they were talking about their plan for, you know, improving roads and sewer and everything all at the same time, and rotating. You know, I think they came up with a really great plan for that. There are some, some roads that, like over in the Anne Street, Queen Street area, that really are in rough shape, that hopefully will be done pretty soon. But yeah, I think that the city and, and very smart people are, are working on that.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Becker.
I mean, I've said it before, I'll say it again. There's thirty years of neglect, and we're not going to fix it overnight. But that said, I think we're moving in the right direction. This year, thirteen streets were paved, you know, eleven thousand-some feet of water main were replaced, thirty-six hundred feet of sidewalk were replaced. We're scheduled to replace fourteen streets next year and finish all of the alleys next year. You know, these things are, are lined up. The dig-once philosophy that Jeff Plummer's describing is, is absolutely one of the best policies because it allows us to maximize the value of our dollars by leveraging them when there are opportunities for grant monies so that we can, you know, get the most good out of our tax dollars. And so that is absolutely critical and important. But the important thing to remember here is that, you know, all of this is planned, and, and all of this takes a year to two years. By the time you deal with planning, engineering, bidding, getting a contractor lined up, it takes time. It's not going to happen overnight.
Thank you. Candidate Kengas, same question.
I'm assuming a broken record here. But it's what, what the city does, it's, they're doing, moving forward in a very systematic way. And it kind of focuses on what's the, the worst place to start. You know, like you said already about, you know, working your way from dig-once to fix three things. So it's, it's very systematic. So like Mr. Rod Becker said, but it's taken thirty years to get us where we're at. But we are moving in a steady fashion. And, and I know you may be living on a street that, well, what about my street? Someone else may say, well, what about my street? What about my street? Trust me, there is a plan in place for which the city of Nagani wants to get to your street and get it taken care of. It's, there's not, the goal is not to leave someone out.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll begin with candidate Ganabati. What can the Nagani City Council do to improve slash increase the availability of locally grown and raised food in the city?
Well, I think that our farmers' markets are a great place to start with that. I think that they, they've become pretty popular. We do that, you know, for the summer into the fall. And, you know, people come and sell their goods. And I, I think that, you know, we could take a page out of Ishwamang's book with their community gardens. And I, you know, I think that would be a, a great thing to start here. And, you know, I, I drive by there on a regular basis in the morning and see kids out from school in, in the gardens first thing in the morning. And that's a really cool thing to see. I, I think that it would really benefit our, our kids and our community to have community gardens and, you know, to learn about raising food.
Thank you. Candidate Becker.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly concur with, with that sentiment. You know, the farmer's market is, is a great opportunity, and it's one of the few places where the city can actually move the needle by, by creating that space, creating that opportunity, and, and supporting the coordination of that. That's largely been the city's function, is to, to coordinate that opportunity for people. But it's, you know, it's, it's not the kind of thing that the city has a ton of opportunity in terms of moving the needle or telling, you know, the school that they need to have a class about this or that. It's just, it's just not our place. So, you know, there are maybe opportunities for a program similar to what's going on in Ishwamang in terms of their community garden. Those folks came and visited us just recently at city council meeting to talk about the, the composting program, which is expanding, and they'd love to get it into our area. And that is certainly, you know, one factor in being able to, you know, grow quality food locally.
Thank you. Candidate Kengas.
Okay, that's, coming from old grandma, grandpa way out in the south of Oton, come up, they go, living on a big old farm. Obviously, it's on their land, they grow whatever they want, you know, type of thing. But when you take that and you move that into a city, where are you going to get the space for that? You know, who's going, is the city going to donate a plot of land so you can, you know, grow whatever? It's, I, I don't know. It's like, there's got to be like a, a working together between the city and some organization or a group of people, what have you, to have a common ground to see if this is an idea worth moving forward. And if it is, how can they work together to make it happen? So it's, it's, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Plummer, same question.
I tend to agree. It's, it's difficult. The city, the city doesn't have a lot of options to promote local growing of food, other than by virtue of, we have a great farmer's market. We currently only have one farm showing up regularly. And in the past, it's been an issue when there are more farms, they weren't selling enough. And so I would probably just put this back on the consumer. If people want great local food, we've been buying in the summer from this local farmer at the farmer's market, probably eighty percent of our produce. It's the best produce we eat all year round. It's, it's affordable. It's not cheap, but it's incredibly naturally grown, delicious food that we look forward to every week. And the citizens, when they realize the opportunity to have this kind of produce, we will promote and grow the farmer's market, and more farms will show up to answer that response. But I think the city has been helpful promoting the farmer's market and having it there as a venue for farmers to, to be there.
Okay, thank you. This will be our last question before the final statements. And we'll begin with candidate Becker. If you supported an idea the city manager had, but it went against public opinion, how would you handle this situation?
Well, you know, this, this is a, is a situation that may occur, but there are, you know, there are oftentimes differences of opinion. It's the kind of thing where, you know, my job as an elected official is to represent you, the constituents, and, you know, try to deliver what it is that, that we want. I think the biggest piece in all of that is, is understanding sort of what that, what that is and what that looks like. You know, the most relevant example in recent memory here probably is, is Old Town and the proposal to look at selling five acres of it. And I think what you'll find is that, you know, by and in large, you know, the, the issue was, I think, confusing for a lot of voters. And that's unfortunate because all, all our city manager was trying to do was take the public policy that he inherited, because we bought that property long before he got here. And for twenty years, we said, part of our policy is to try to redevelop some of it as it makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Kengas, same question.
Well, like what Mr. Becker said, you get elected on the council by the people. But we're, but we're a representative form of government. You know, a democracy gets you elected to be a representative, to represent you. So a lot of times, you know, I may make a decision that, okay, maybe the city manager made that's, okay, we're going to, whatever, you know, and say, yeah, okay, that's a good idea. But maybe ten people over here say, no, that's stupid. Well, why do you say it's stupid? Well, just because it is. You know, well, we need better information than that. Meanwhile, I got a little brown envelope here I have had for the past ten days, looking in this agenda item, seeing, reading into it and asking questions, why this is a good agenda item. Because why would we get an agenda item given to us in a packet just for us to say no? That just doesn't make any sense. The whole goal is to move the city forward, not to say, oh, put on, put on the brakes.
Thank you. Candidate Plummer.
This is an important issue for me. It's part of the reason I'm running for city council. I was part of Protect Old Town, and we experienced, and it's not to be negative, but we experienced the majority of the city council. We had a massive showing of citizens with very civil, intelligent reasons. They did not want this part of Old Town to be rezoned. There were sixty people in support, around twenty who spoke out, a couple people who were for it. But it was literally like the old boats on Teal Lake issue. It was an overwhelming amount of people. It was the busiest I've seen the city council chambers since the Teal Lake motor issue. And literally, it felt like everyone was ignored. We worked very hard as a group. We got it put on the ballot, and almost three-fourths of Nagani citizens concurred that we need to save this. And we were really thankful for that. But it was an arduous task to correct what was an injustice to democracy that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ganabati.
So if you have, if the city manager has an idea that the public disagrees with, as the public servant, you serve the public. I think it's pretty simple. You know, then the city manager needs to come up with a different idea. You know, I was, I was part of Protect Old Town as well, so I concur with everything that Jeff is saying. But yes, very simply, you represent your constituents and you listen to your constituents, and you do what the public wants because they put you there.
Okay, thank you very much. We have come to the final minutes of the Nagani City Council Forum. Each of our candidates will have two minutes to make a closing statement. Now, as a league, when we invite candidates to come in and join this forum, if they have other things going on or have a good excuse why they cannot attend, we invite them to send a statement. And they have to sign the guidelines, just like all the candidates do. And so what I'm going to do now, before we, we go with the candidates that are here, is to read two statements. And I will abide by the timekeeper as well as I go through these. The first one is the statement from Jill Howard. "As a lifelong resident of Nagani, I have always assisted and supported friends, neighbors, and members of this community in times of trouble. I believe I have always been known to jump in without hesitation to help in any way, contributing big or small, to lessen their burden, to let them know that they do matter. I do believe that I am somebody to be counted on to do my very best. One of the best things for me, having grown up here, is the joy of watching childhood friends start families of their own and watching another generation grow into adulthood. And as time change, times change and progress, to see the core values that have been passed on generational remain intact, which is the foundation of a great community. Being a community-minded person, I realize..." Being a community-minded person, I realize this one-year council term would be the perfect opportunity for me to get my feet wet and gain experience in city government, with the goal of caring for and serving the community as we grow and progress while preserving our heritage. Thank you. The next statement is... Sorry? Deets? Ms. Deets? Tracy Deets. Sorry about that. It's on my phone. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Deets, and I'm running for a seat in our city council. Unfortunately, I am unable to be here in person today due to recovering from a recent surgery. But I appreciate the opportunity for the League of Women Voters of Marquette County to share my vision with you. I am proud to be a member of this community and believe strongly in our potential and future. Having lived in Nagani for thirty years, I have witnessed both our strength and challenges we face. As a proud veteran of the U.S. Navy, I learned the importance of servants, leadership, and teamwork. These values guide me, and I am dedicated to applying them to our local government. My experience serving the Planning Commission has given me valuable insights into the needs and priorities of our community, as well as the importance of thoughtful development. I believe in transparency and communication. As your city council member, I will ensure that your voices are heard. I am committed to being accessible and responsive to your concerns, creating a council that actively listens and engages with the community. I am committed to sustainable growth. We must manage our city's growth wisely, advocating for responsible develop and enhances our quality of life. One area of particular concern is Old Town. I am committed to keeping Old Town safe and dedicated solely to recreational use for our community, ensuring it remains a space for everyone to enjoy. I am also passionate about supporting our local entrepreneurs and fostering innovation. By inviting in community initiatives, we can build a vibrant economy that benefits everyone. Together, we can create a future that reflects our shared values and aspirations. I am committed to listening, advocating, and making decisions that serve our community's best interests. I appreciate your time today, and would be honored to have your vote. And now, we're going to begin with candidate Kengas. You have two minutes.
Okay. Well, again, I want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. Like I said at the beginning, this has been a challenge for me. I've never done this before, so if I stammered over my words too much, I apologize. But, like I say, I moved here in 2006 from West Deshawing, and I had no interest whatsoever. We had a newer house there, and I was like, why do I want to move to Nagani? Oh, this is a town that's falling apart. I don't want to move there. But then, my wife showed me our house on Clark Street. I saw a Lake Superior stone fireplace and oak French doors leading into a dining room. I could say, it's darn you for bringing me here. So, I've been in Nagani ever since. And but with that, it's been a good seven, eight-plus years before seeing the town in the same condition it was when we moved here. But when we... And I was on one of the panel, another panel to find our city manager we have now, Mr. Heffron. He has done an outstanding job in the revitalization of Nagani. And it's... And I'll people... And it's... I see is... Here's the ultimate definition of leadership in my eyes. Leadership, I see, is a tip of the arrow. You know, a tip of the arrow has a vision. Has a vision where it wants to go. But then, to make that arrow go straight, you had to have the rest of the arrow to help it go straight. The rest of the arrowhead, then you got the stick, then the little fuzzy things on the end before you put in the bowl. Then you got to pull back the... Pull it back. Things have to work in line. So, and it's not just one person or just one council or just X amount of people just making decisions. It's a team effort. And there's got to be buy-in from the city employees, you know, city officials, citizens. So, is everyone going to buy into everything all at one the same time? No. But we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Plummer, you have two minutes.
Thank you all again for the opportunity to be here. I love what's happened in downtown Nagani. We have a beautiful streetscape. It's a huge improvement. It shows investment from the city in our downtown. I also loved downtown Nagani twenty-two years ago, and would listen to tourists say, what an incredible old town. They liked the oldness of it. And obviously, there's a balance between maintenance and aesthetics. With that said, the condition of a town, the condition of the streets, is important. But really, the people who populate it are the most important. And if we have beautiful streets and streetskapes, but the people are discontent with how they're being heard and represented, we do have a cultural problem and a divide. And I can feel it already. It's small, but we can make a course of self-correction by forums like we see, more people showing up to the city council meetings and having civil, friendly, intelligent discussions. And I encourage anyone to go on the city website and watch some of the comments made about Old Town from the people trying to preserve it. It was a three-hour meeting of just wonderful reflection on why individuals wanted to protect this. And I think if we can cultivate more of the citizen-driven city policy, I think our leaders will respond. We just have to make them know that this is a citizen-driven town. And some ideas people might think are great, and some, not so much. And we should always remember why, when I hear people wanting to move to Nagani, they want the amenities that we already have. So, if we squander those amenities and grow in an unintelligent fashion, we'll all be at a loss for it, including people who want to move here. So, I think we do need to thoughtfully preserve our greatest assets. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ganavati?
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for putting this on. Definitely a first for me. I don't think one minute or two minutes is enough to get my ideas out. But I grew up here. Like I said, I went to this school. My kids went to this school. I started my business here. I plan on living here for the rest of my life and dying here. I am... I'm running simply because I love my town, and I'm invested here. And I love the people in it, and I believe every voice has a right to be heard. I have, you know, seen some things that I didn't like that were going on in government, and some things that were going on behind closed doors that weren't very transparent. And it's caused a lot of confusion with people and has caused some mistrust. And I think that we really need to come together as a community, let our voices be heard, come up, you know, with ideas together, and, you know, plan our future together. Public servants are here to transparently serve the public, and that's what I want to do. I believe we can embrace progress. I think that the downtown is beautiful. It's certainly, you know, an improvement from some of the, you know, buildings that were, you know, becoming in disrepair. And, you know, we're saving the vista. I'm very happy about that, as coming from a theater background. So, I believe that it's important to preserve the heritage that built this town. And it's important that we...
Oh, I need to...
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I didn't see the stop sign. I was looking at the page.
Thank you. Candidate Becker?
Thank you to the League for hosting this event and to all of you for taking your time out tonight to be here. You know, I hope that we can all come together and work to better this community in the coming years. But I happen to think that your choice couldn't be more stark in this election. I think you've got candidates who, in some cases, are talking the talk. And then, you've got candidates who are walking the walk. You've got candidates that are actually creating businesses here, are actually investing in our community, and are actually engaging the community at a very real level. You know, I think when you look at your ballot, you should note that there are several candidates there who have been doing the work, and I mean for years, doing the work on behalf of you, the citizens. I come from the camp of decisions are made by those who show up. And I don't just mean, you know, tonight. You all deserve people who show up. In the last two weeks, there's been a Planning Commission meeting, a council meeting, a budget work session, a strategic plan meeting, and, you know, leaders show up. Those are the people that I would hope you would want to see, you know, representing you on city council. Beyond that, though, I think that you need people who really understand what levers can be pulled by someone in city government. There are only certain things that can be done by a city council or a city government. And you need folks that understand what the role of city government is. You know? In my opinion, there's a lot of major projects going on. It's not the time for training wheels. There are a number of other ways for people to get engaged on other committees and other commissions where they can learn how to plug in. But bottom line, I think if you like the direction that the city is going, then you should elect the people who got us here.
Okay. Thank you. This concludes our candidate forum for the Nagani City Council. The League of Women Voters of Marquette County would like to thank all the candidates for participating. And you can applaud. I have a special thank you to Mr. Grizuli's government class for formulating some of the questions, and also the audience member performing. To fund this forum, and the principal and staff of the Nagani High School for the use of this beautiful auditorium. We, the League... We of the League would like to remind the audience that if you found this forum informative and you believe that voter participation is not just a spectator sport, then we urge you to join us. The League of Women Voters is always open to new members of any gender. For further information on the upcoming general election, go to our online voter guide at vote411.org and to the League's local and state printed guides, which will be out shortly. Remember to vote at home, in early voting, or on Election Day, November 5th. Your vote is your voice. And before we conclude, I would like to let the audience know that you can mingle with the candidates in the commons room as we're done.
Through those doors.
Through those doors, yes. Thank you very much.